Okay, you're live.
All right, we will call the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors meeting for October 23rd, 2023 to order Supervisor Lewis.
Present.
Supervisor Day.
Yeah.
Supervisor Ayers.
Yeah.
Supervisor Lyons.
Yeah.
And Supervisor McDaniels here as well. We will now have a prayer for the board filed by a pledge allegiance. Those attending are not required to participate. Would like to join us, please stand.
Lord, I pray for those that are sick amongst us. Pray for those that have lost loved ones in recent days. Give them comfort. Guide us as we go through this board meeting tonight. Give us wisdom to do the things that are right for our citizens of Rockbridge County. To give us our many sins. Amen.
My allegiance to the United States of America and due to Republic of British hands, one nation, other God, and the people of liberty and justice.
We will hold citizen comments near the beginning of the meeting. We will do our best to take citizen comments remotely as well. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. To join by telephone, you may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website. The web and our ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature. You can press the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you're calling in by telephone. Any changes to the agenda tonight? Look sir. All right, any recognitions or presentations for us tonight? Look sir. All right, this time we'll open up citizen comments. Anyone signed up wishing to address the board? Is anyone online wishing to address the board?
No, sir.
Anyone present didn't have the opportunity to sign up wishing to address? All right. Next up, we have the approval of the October 10th, 2023 minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to review those? Any questions, comments? Hearing none is our motion to approve.
I'm moved.
A second.
Second.
All right. Mister Lyons.
Yes.
Miss Ayers.
Yes.
Mister Day.
Yes.
Mister Lewis.
Hi.
And Chairperson, yes, as well. Next up, we have a consideration of school appropriation.
Um, yes, um, for our Fund 50, uh, the school fund, uh, we have a total of three hundred fifty-eight thousand four hundred ninety dollars, uh, for the, uh, school safety capital.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Harrison? Hearing none is our motion to approve.
So moved.
In a second.
A second.
All right. Mister Lewis.
Hi.
Mister Day.
Yes.
Miss Ayers.
Yes.
Mister Lyons.
Yes.
And Chairperson, yes, as well. Next up, we have a consideration of county appropriation.
Uh, yes, uh, we have a total appropriations from all funds. Uh, this is the general and the capital purchases fund of four hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars. Um, the majority of that being the three hundred fifty-eight thousand four hundred ninety for the, uh, school, um, capital safety. And we also have a total for bills this period, two hundred seventy-seven thousand two hundred nine dollars and ninety-one cents.
Any questions for Mister Harrison? Hearing none is our motion to approve.
I'm moved.
A second.
Second.
All right, Miss Ayers.
Yes.
Mister Lyons.
Yes.
Mister Day.
Yes.
Mister Lewis.
Hi.
And Chairperson, yes, as well. Next up, we have an update from Commissioner Revenue, Mister White. So like to come forward.
Good evening, board members. I'm going to read this because I don't want to miss anything. Uh, and I don't want to go off on a tangent, and I'll try to be as quick as possible. I would like to take just a few minutes to speak to you as a board for probably my last half. I felt very strongly that I should not retire without letting you know the state of the Commissioner's office. What I would try to say to you is by no means meant to appear that I am patting myself on the back or bragging in any way. Simply put is to thank you for the support that you have given my office and publicly thank my team. The office has come a long way in 20 years. For example, several, several years ago, I came before you as a board and asked you that an auditor's position be funded by the county and ordered in my office where they have the resources available to audit certain areas of taxation and improve upon the assessments and reporting in these areas. I also provided information to the board that showed that this position would not only pay for itself, but it would bring in additional revenue for the county. And the day that it wasn't paying for itself, I would be the first to ask that funding cease. As you are aware, that has not been the case. As of October the 18th, my office has made assessments due to the work of that auditor that has generated six hundred and twenty-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-two cents in additional revenue for 2023. And the year is not over. Your investment in my office has had a great return, and for that, I thank you. I am leaving behind an office that I'm very proud of. A team that knows their responsibilities and performs their job as well as anyone. A team that treats our taxpayers with courtesy and respect. A team that communicates well with one another. A team that is professional, and I thank them for all they do for me, our citizens, and our county. Beginning January 1st, we will have a new commissioner for the first time in 20 years. As you know, Brooke is an intelligent, responsible, and kind young woman, and she will continue to improve the office with fresh ideas. She will be a great public servant for Rockbridge County. I know you will continue to support her as you have me. Chair and board members, looking back, it has been a great ride. I wouldn't trade it for anything. And I thank you for the support that you have given me in my office over the years. Thank you.
Now, before you leave, thank you for, for your devotion to our community and all the support that you've given the various boards and supervisors. Uh, 20 years, you've seen a great deal of change and, uh, even county leadership and, uh, uh, your leadership in that office has been, uh, a constant. And, uh, you know, I'm reminded of a quote that leaders, uh, being a leader doesn't require a title, but having one doesn't make you a leader either. And the work of your office and, and, uh, the support that you've given us is due to your leadership, and I thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman, I was gonna, I was gonna try to introduce him a little bit, but I'm, I've been here for just over half of that 20 years, and it's been a pleasure for me to, uh, I'm really gonna miss the mental health breaks. I know I show up down there every now and then when things are just about, I'm about the end of my rope, and I go in and talk to David. He's cool, calm, collected. Now, he's done that to me a couple of times to come up to, uh, to talk to me, but, uh, I really am gonna miss that, but I truly do appreciate how he has left this office because the folks sitting right here are just absolutely amazing, and, uh, it's, it's greatly appreciated by all of us.
Good deal. Now, we'll get to see if they want to stay for the entire meeting. Next up, we have, uh, consideration of requests from, uh, Main Street Lexington.
Yes.
I believe this is, uh, Mr. Lyons.
I've got a, oh, I've got a brief report.
Okay, go right ahead.
Uh, so it's noted in your board report, Main Street Lexington is proposing an initiative to enhance and revitalize the old courthouse square, uh, downtown. And per the marked up plat, again, uh, sorry for the, the hand drawing on that, but it's the best way I can do it. Thank you to Ms. Huffin for finding that plat. Uh, the county does own the Veterans, uh, Veterans Memorial, and the city owns the remainder of the common area. Uh, I did attach a letter from Main Street Lexington, which requests as, as part of that project that the county transfer ownership of the memorial to the city. And I was not with the county when the old courthouse transferred to private ownership, uh, so I'm not a hundred percent clear on, uh, how it came to be that the county owns the memorial. I know there was a lot of discussion at that time. Uh, I do know that, uh, when funds were raised for the construction, there were more than what were needed for the actual construction, so the remainder went into a restricted account to provide for future maintenance. And over the years, we've approved, uh, some reimbursements out of that account mainly to the, the, uh, the garden club for flower plantings, et cetera. Uh, we also periodically, periodically replace replacement flags for the flag poles, and currently the, the balance is, uh, eight thousand and seventy-six dollars. Uh, I do know City Council heard, uh, presentation on the proposal last Thursday, uh, and a public meeting, a public input meeting is scheduled onsite for November the 2nd, and I believe it'd be a, uh, they, they plan to do a press release that comes out this week, I believe. Uh, so and again, uh, Main Street Lexington Committee Chair, uh, Jesse Lyons, I believe, is going to, uh, and Rebecca Logan's here too, uh, is here to answer any questions.
Please come forward.
Good evening. I thank you, Mr. Suter, and good evening, members of the board. My name's Jesse Lyons, and I moved to Lexington in 2002 and Rockbridge County in 2002, 21 years ago, so I've been here for those 20 years, uh, and came to work here right out of college for Capoff orders, National Headquarters, which has been in Lexington since the early 1990s, and a great partner of both the county and the city. And, uh, I worked at the old jail from 2002 to 2004, when it went private, and during all that property change, which was not uncommon for that area at that time. And I've been involved in the community, worked for KA for those years, and helped in many ways, and I was approached and was interested in this project that Main Street is putting on and hopefully going to execute in the next two years to rejuvenate and update the old courthouse square grounds. I walked those grounds every day for several years, going to city stakes or the palms, depending on the time of day, and enjoyed being downtown, but also in the beautiful county that we surround. And so when this project come up, I was heard about it through Rebecca, the executive director of Main Street Lexington, who's here. And I said, I'd love to hear about it and see if I could offer anything. I've worked with the landscape architect that's involved, Arthur Barton Stein, uh, with KA. I manage the building and grounds and property at the Manor House and Capoff Waters Headquarters at Mulberry Hill, and I had my experience there. So I said, I'd, I'd love to hear about it if I could help in some way. Asked a lot of questions at some initial pre-planning meetings when it was just conceptual, and I was asked after that to chair the committee and be the project lead. And so I've agreed to do that, and we have organized and are continuing to organize a broad set of stakeholders from the county, the city, the garden club, veterans organizations, um, importantly, adjacent business and property owners as well, property owners, including the county. And when we, some of the early questions I asked was, who, who owns everything? You know, we, we gotta make sure everybody's on the stakeholders. And one of the answers was that the city owns almost all the property in that area through the, through, not the alleyway necessarily, but through the, um, behind the court, old courthouse, and through the courthouse screen and out front, which was needed back after the, uh, most recent purchase of the courthouse. And the county owns the Veterans Memorial. And we knew right away that would be of interest. And so in developing, and this will be in some of the public materials and in advisory committee meetings, as well as the public forum, one of, one of our five goals for the project, which is still very conceptual, is to preserve and enhance that Veterans Memorial, no matter what. And that's, that's key. It's one of the stated five goals. It's a tactical item within five strategic goals, but it's on purpose. And from a practical and project standpoint, I just asked the question, would it be possible for that land to be all one owner, one contiguous owner in that area, so that it would be through one process to make the rejuvenation? Now, we've had one advisory committee meeting. The additional members that couldn't attend that meeting, we're working to schedule another one. Uh, and then we do have a public forum scheduled for November 2nd from 2:00 to 4:00 at the old courthouse in the community room, but mainly 2:00 to 4:00 won't be a two-hour presentation, several periods, a long period of time afterwards, for ideation from stakeholders in the community. Uh, what do they want to see? How do they want to use it? Do they not want to see anything change? And that's what the committee will then look at and synthesize ideas to propose to the architect for potential plans. Um, this isn't Jesse Lyons' idea. This isn't what I want the design to look like. I want the committee to work well with the city and county to rejuvenate an area that's for the entire community, just like the courthouse has been used for hundreds of years. And that's the purpose of the letter sent to the county.
There any questions for Mister Lyons?
No, my only question would be, would that remain the Veterans Memorial? And I think that would, you're saying that absolutely, that, that would be in some form rejuvenated.
Oh, yes, I, it, as, as one of the main project goals and, and non-negotiable that that would remain the Veterans Memorial. Uh, and how that looks may, uh, I don't, I don't have any design plans, um, but an idea to preserve and enhance the engagement with it, um, maybe even the way it's approached, but I couldn't even go further than that. It was something that's an idea, but yes, right there.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons.
Mr. Thank you.
Is there any comments from board members?
Yes, okay, go ahead. Like, um, I've known Mr. Lyons and, and respect him greatly, and I, I think he's done the right, uh, things to move, move this project forward. Um, I'm, I am not for returning or succeeding the property, um, that the Veterans Memorial have, uh, as a county representative, I, I, I appreciate being a partner in the activities that happened there, uh, Veterans Day and Memorial Day. That's what makes it, just from my perspective, but, and I don't think that's a, a deal breaker for the project, and I wanna, uh, want us to be a partner and, and enhance, as, as Mister Lyons said, uh, respect and enhance is exactly what I would want to see with it, but I, I would just prefer to, uh, for that continue to be county property, so that we could be a partner in, in all these things.
Well, I, I guess my, uh, with, with respect to, uh, Mister Lewis's thoughts, I, I don't, for me, I don't feel that ownership of that property has anything to do with not being part of that as a community. That, that it, it seems to me that we are part of Veterans Memorial. So for me, that, that, that wouldn't be a deal breaker. Um, I, I guess I would like to have more questions about, is it, is it a streamlined process? How does somebody go about doing this project when they're dealing with two different locations or localities? That would be, that would seem odd. It, why, I, why do we own this piece of property? How, how did this come about? I guess I would ask that question. What were the, what were the reasons for us to own this piece of property?
Do you know?
Yeah, when the property was conveyed, uh, to the private owners for the buildings around, the part that remained was courthouse square, and it was determined that the county would grant that to the city of Lexington, because it was a public space and used, uh, frequently for county, uh, city residents, as well as county to cut through to other streets, to gather, whatever. The memorial was created, uh, through the county is, and the county's been the fiscal agent for the memorial since the beginning. Um, I think there have been additional plaques added over the years, from what I can tell from my file. Um, it was retained, but there was discussion, um, 2011 maybe, about transferring the memorial to the city of Lexington. Um, the last note I have is that the city of Lexington was gonna look into it and determine what maintenance would be required, and there's no additional information or feedback on that. The other request from the board at the time was to contact the VFW, um, Mister Siemens, I think, um, to see what the VFW's, uh, reactions or comments might be, should the county turn the, the parcel over to the city. And we never received a response on that either.
I don't think, uh, if, if, if I'm correct, please correct me if I'm not, but I, I don't believe, uh, you were looking for any action or anything like that tonight. It's just, uh, presentation for us to first hear, first take on it.
I'd, I'd call this the first reading.
Yeah.
And, uh, so what I would, uh, you know, obviously, uh, you know, I understand what Mister Lewis is
saying, and, and as well as Miss Ayers, uh, I would ask that county administrator, uh, continue to do due diligence on the matter and, and bring it back to the board when more information is available. And board members to work with you, county administrator, as far as your concerns or, or thoughts. Does acceptable?
Sure, it is. I, I just, um, when, when I, I will be in discussions, I'm sure, uh, moving ahead, um, and I'm, I'll just let them know that, you know, the, the board, I think a hundred percent supports the Veterans Memorial.
A hundred percent.
And, and, um, so I think we're looking for the best outcome for that as well. And, uh, when it gets to the point where we're having more detailed discussion after a citizen meeting, uh, I'll bring that information back to the board and share it and see if the request has changed or if it remains the same.
Okay. The design process doesn't have anything to do with this particular issue, I, I would think, correct?
I, until, until design is done, I, I, I don't know. I did attend the meeting, um, last Tuesday or Wednesday, it looks Tuesday, uh, where, where we, we received a overview from Arthur Bartonstein. And he, he just kind of gave it some cloud-based type of thoughts on what could be done. There's a lot, whole, a lot of things that could be done. Those would all be influenced by, as Mister Lyons said, stakeholder input. So if there, if there was to be an adjustment of a part of the memorial or something, I mean, the memorial would stay, uh, is what I heard a hundred percent, uh, but there could be a, an adjustment and elevation that, you know, I just don't know exactly how that would look.
I like say, board members, uh, can work with you on their concerns, and you can bring back more information when you have that.
It's okay.
Uh, next up, we have the consideration of the rental assistance program. Mister Suter, I guess we'll start with you.
Yes, uh, your board record, report contains a summary of, uh, our local rental assistance program. And I'll try to be concise here as I can, but I got a couple pages of this. Um, the program started back in the, in the late 1970s, early 1980s, had me able to determine exactly when, but that's the, the era. Uh, the county has operated the program on behalf of, uh, the three localities, uh, the county and the two cities ever since. And from what I can discern, uh, the program was originally intended to be fully funded by Virginia Housing, a private 501(c)(3) created by the Commonwealth and intended to, uh, and this was intended to be fully funded, and was created by the Commonwealth in 1972. Uh, the program administers funds from the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, or more commonly known as HUD. And over the past five or six years, the amount of funding passed through from Virginia Housing has not kept pace with the cost of the program. And this year, uh, we did some calculations, and we're, we're on track to be reimbursed for less than half of the hundred and three thousand dollar annual operating budget. Uh, further, the program has grown more and more complicated to administer, uh, and fewer local residents stand to benefit under Virginia Housing's current lottery program for housing vouchers. Uh, as an example, in the attached memo from, uh, from Bruce Sigler, our housing manager, uh, you'll note, uh, an illustrative, uh, snapshot of the program from May of this year. So in the month of May, 203 people were placed on the waiting list to receive a voucher. Uh, 14 of those, uh, were living in the Rockbridge area, the county and the, the two cities. Um, and 80 were living elsewhere in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and 109 of those were living out of state. Um, so of the 203 folks in the waiting list, only 14 residents already living in the Rockbridge area were placed on that waiting list. Yet there were well more than, than the 14 residents that applied to the waiting list. In other words, not everybody that applied locally got on the list. There was, uh, much higher percentage of those out of area and out of state. Uh, you may recall that as early as 2018, we had discussions, uh, we discussed transferring the rental assistance program to the Rockbridge Area Department of Social Services to generally to coincide with the construction or renovation of a new social services facility. Um, our goal has been to, been to keep the human services functions in close proximity to each other. Um, and additionally, we were hopeful that DSS could, could navigate the state administrative requirements. Um, they, they are state-oriented, and they've got a lot of processes they go through, and we thought it might be a little bit easier for them as well. Uh, until recently, that was still the plan. Uh, however, given the fact that, uh, last spring, uh, Mister Sigler is with us, uh, announced his retirement effective November 17th, we start, we decided to look at advancing the transfer date to more or less coincide with his retirement, rather than waiting till we're in a new facility. Uh, it was a good transition point to take a look at. Um, so then after giving some careful consideration, uh, and with the, with a, the recommendation of regional and state DSS offices, the Rockbridge area DSS declined to take the program. And frankly, I'm listening to you tonight. I'm not sure I'm a hundred percent blame. Um, uh, and that was, we didn't learn that until late September, so, uh, that leaves us kind of in a tight spot. Bruce has done an outstanding job in preparing the office for, for transition, training our part-time housing inspector, Melissa Christensen, for the role. Uh, however, given all we know, we've looked at other options, uh, given all we know, we have looked at other options, um, other than simply continuing county oversight of the program. So after learning that DSS would not be accepting the program, I did approach Lexington and Buna Vista City Managers to see if they had any interest, uh, and they did not. And, uh, this leaves us with two options, and the first one being maintaining local oversight. Uh, in this case, we would be, uh, seeking backfill from this Christensen, uh, immediately. And for the reasons I've, I've reviewed so far, I, I don't recommend that. Um, second option is returning the program to Virginia Housing to administer. Uh, Mister Sigler does not believe that any clients currently enrolled in the program will be negatively impacted, other than the fact that Virginia Housing may have reduced hours and days of onsite availability. And I, I don't think that may, that, that will be the case. I'm sure there will be reduced hours and reduced days. Um, our, our gut is they would do what they had, they've done in other areas and contract with another regional agency similar to the arrangement where, uh, Waynesboro, uh, administers a program in Allegheny County. Uh, should the board support the recommendation, we'd need to send written notice to Virginia Housing, which would start the 120-day required notice period in the contract. Uh, I would also recommend that we continue to plan for programmatic space in the new social services facility to provide a space for Virginia Housing or their contracted service to operate and, and meet with clients. And again, keeping with the, uh, the premise that we'd like to keep these human services grouped together, so it's as convenient as possible for folks. Uh, in either case, Mister Sigler has graciously offered to stay on part-time helping this transition. Um, he, he knows more about anyone than the program than, than anyone, and he is here tonight to help answer any questions that you might have. And again, the options, uh, presented include to authorize staff to provide notice to Virginia Housing that will be, be exiting the agreement and returning oversight to Virginia Housing. Um, you could set aside decisions until an upcoming meeting, uh, keeping in mind of course that Bruce is, uh, leaving us in full-time status, uh, in mid-November. Uh, or you could determine to keep local administration in place and direct staff to immediately take steps as would be necessary to address staffing needs. That completes my report. Uh, there was a lot of information. Like I say, I'm happy to do my best to answer any questions, and also Mister Sigler's here.
Mister Sigler, would you like to come forward and provide any information additional?
I agree with everything County Administrator said. Um, you have in my packet the executive summary that I had wrote, uh, listing a lot of the problems that I had since, uh, the almost four years that I've been in that position. And, um, you know, some of you know that I work next door in social services and adult protective services, and I was there when it originally was discussed about this when, uh, Susan Adcock was the administrator about rental assistance program going over there. And, uh, that was in my executive summary, and, um, I was in that meeting, and they, because of a bunch of logistics, uh, came down from the state level and regional that they not take it, and also that the, the next, uh, recommendation that I had was that one of the localities take over administering the program. Since the localities have declined, you Since the localities have declined, you, like Mr. Suter said, it's a, we can continue on as is and if you gave me to elaborate a little bit more why a little bit of hesitant about the county to continue that, I can, or to give it back to Virginia Housing and the administrative agreement is we have to give them 120 days notice. The, the one thing that I, because I have been in discussions with Virginia Housing about this, we are not the only locality considering this right now. So time is of the essence. They would have to get somebody in here. Once Mr. Suter provides Virginia Housing notice that we would exit the administrative agreement to have somebody in here before the 120 days to take over the program.
They would have to have somebody.
Yes, it's, to use a term that Mr. Suter says, we turn the keys over on 120 days. When I talked to, because quite honestly, there's a lot of changes at Virginia Housing right now. When I asked that question, they said, we couldn't, we can't give you an exact time that we would have somebody else, another entity take over this program, but it would have to be before the 120 days. So that puts it out. If 120 days notice, for example, is November 1st, it bring it out till the end of February. And unless you respectfully wait to, to make a decision, but it does have to be 120 days. It could be sooner. I do know, like I mentioned, that there are other localities that are currently considering this. Virginia Housing disclosed that to me, but they would not find me the other localities I inquired. So they would immediately begin looking most likely on other housing authority to administer the program for our area.
You said that you didn't think that our people being helped now through this program would be affected. How do we know that? And how can we be assured that they would not?
Because they're on the program and the, and the program is very, very complex. Falls under the code of federal regulation. And then we have to abide by Virginia Housing's policy. So people that are on the program, there are a lot of items that they have to do throughout the year and remain on the program. So someone have, there's a lot of rules and regulations. So we see these people. When we go out and inspect our houses, at least once a year we're required to do. If their family circumstances change, they have to do what's called an interim reexamination and then they have to do an annual reexamination. And they all know this when they come onto the program and we, we issue their voucher and brief them. And they have to do this annually. So the only if your question is how would negatively affect them as far as their voucher, it won't. The only thing that would happen is there would not be like, I'm in that office Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 5:00. We don't get a whole lot of walk-ins. We do, and it's up, it's up to the local housing agency, which we are the LHA. And Virginia Housing is the PHA, the Public Housing Agency. They leave it up to the LHAs to decide how they want to administer the program. We can do in-person visits where we require somebody to come to the office and turn in all paperwork and recertify. Or we could do it by mail. Or we can do it virtually. We have been doing our, a lot of our annual certifications and interims by mail. Because we know the people on the program when we issue the voucher. Now, when I first came on the program, because I didn't know any of these people, I wanted to lay eyes on them. So we had in-person appointments. So there, there's not like a, an office requirement per se where we have to be there available. I mean, the phone doesn't ring off the hook by any means in our office.
But, but if we give up the program, there will be no office.
There would have to be an office. Whether or not it would be open one day a week, two days a week. That would be up to the entity that enters into the administrative agreement with Virginia.
That's what Mr. Suter was talking about.
Yeah.
So they.
But they're not doing it. And we're just hoping that this, the state who has not done what they needed to do for us in the beginning will somehow in 120 days.
And they will. There's, I know that there's other localities that have dumped this program in the almost four years that I've been there and they.
They did.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
That was one of the discussions when county administrator asked me to start looking. When I started, there was 33 localities under Virginia Housing and now it's down to 29. Because it's a, the Commonwealth created in 1972 for Virginia Housing to administer. And Virginia Housing is the entity that administers this program for localities in the Commonwealth that don't have their own housing authorities or the wherewithal to be able to administer it at that level. And so that's what they do. There are nonprofits under Virginia Housing that work with Virginia Housing to administer it. There's a Central Virginia Housing Coalition. There's a, there's, there's a whole bunch of different entities that take care of this program. So it's because it's an administrative agreement that has to be renewed. Typically, it's supposed to be renewed every two years, but it's not always, you know, signed every two years. They have to be prepared to know that a locality is going to exit the agreement. And vice, it works vice versa. They have to give the locality some notice about taking over the program as well, because there are localities. We get audited all the time at the state level and at the federal level. By HUD and by Virginia Housing. So obviously, if there is a locality that's not doing what they're supposed to do, they're going to get put on notice that Virginia Housing may take over oversight of the program and they have to give timeline just vice versa like we did. I wouldn't have made that recommendation, one of the four, if I didn't feel that Virginia Housing would be able to take over the program. And that is one of the questions that they asked me is what level of service are you expecting? I said, I would expect the same level of services as we were here, but I understand there may not be an office eight hours a day, five days a week. But we don't, we don't get a lot of traffic. The traffic that we do get is typically traffic that we generate. We know what is coming when we issue vouchers, when we open the waiting lists, when people come in to do the voucher briefing. So.
How, how long has this state started putting people that are not in our locality on the waiting list ahead of the people that do live in our?
Well, we can't have a residency requirement, but we can have a residency preference. So there's, when I took that position April 1st, 2020, it had been, the preferences were residential, meaning local. And then out of county and then out of state. And then there's also handicap disabled part of that. So that was our order of preferences and it's, we have to have a posted in the wall in the office what we do. And so it's, we have a local preference and then we have a state preference and then out of state. And before it was when the waiting list would open, people would go online, apply. And then it's done online. So it's date and timestamp. So say if they're going to open the waiting list for eight hours and it opens at nine, you're going to have how many of us, hundreds of people on their computer at nine o'clock? And so if someone was in Rockbridge County at 0900 exactly in 00 seconds, they would be number one and then somebody locally number two. And that's how the, the computer system for Virginia Housing sorts it. And then after local residents, they've gone through, then they would do the out of county and then out of state. Well, Virginia Housing changed to a lottery system. Alls I know is when this lottery was implemented, when the waiting list opened in the third of this year, like the county administrator said, only 14, 15 people gone on it locally. And I know there was a lot more than that because they sent me a spreadsheet the night that the waiting list closed and it showed me the picked and not picked. And so there was a lot and we, we got the phone calls because not everybody could come in and fill out a paper application. There are no paper applications per se unless someone doesn't have access to a computer. Someone is handicapped or disabled. They can call us and we take their information and we enter for them. So we had a lot of those names when Melissa and I looked at the list. We knew that they were residing locally and they didn't get selected for the waiting list. So that's what they're using now is the lottery. And I just ran the numbers before I came down. We've been done with the people that we selected locally. I have 22 vouchers. Right now there's 31 in Virginia and 109 still out of state. And we can't, we can't open the waiting list again till it's zeroed out. Virginia Housing says waiting list has to be down, everybody removed from it. Then we send them an email, hey, can we open our waiting list? And then they'll say, yes, you can. And then they'll send me the advertisement. We do all that stuff.
Bruce, could you?
Oh, go ahead.
I just want to, I'm sorry. I wanted to interject it back to, to your report. I wanted to say something there that I didn't feel was included. From my perspective, the personnel committee's recommendation is to unfortunately return this to the state.
I did not do that. You're exactly right.
Just for the boards. Bob and I've looked at it, you know, we, we.
Okay.
And, and, and as I would say, as you both have said and as Ayers has said, on, we're, my job is to look after Rockbridge County Tax Schools. And right now they're going out of state with this program. So I, I, I can't in good conscience, you know, continue that process. I don't think so.
How much of this is state funded and how much is county funded?
It's, it used to be, we actually had a surplus some years coming from, and the way this works, I think it's what $37 or $39 a voucher now?
It's $37 a voucher.
$37 a voucher. So if we had, if we got 150 vouchers here, it would be $37 a month per voucher, which added up to fair amount of money over the course of the year. And some years we had, we, we got more money back in for our vouchers than our operational costs. If we project what we've got this year and we've got 113, 109, how many, how many vouchers right now?
Right now, we, I just printed the report out.
It's around 110, 115.
109 right now.
Okay, 109. So we're at 109. That 109 times $37 a month does not, it only gets you up to, if you annualize that, about $47,000 a year.
That's what I, in your report, you're saying we're running $55,000 deficit.
Right. And, and so, and so, yeah, we're, we're running the deficit now. You know, if we're, if we're running a deficit and, and you know, it's, it's doing a lot of good.
And serving.
It's serving, it's serving things. It's doing a whole lot of good. That's one thing. But if, if you've got the same, you're going to have the same number of vouchers, the same everything, and you're not going to be spending that money. You know, we felt we had to, had to bring that to you and not to pile on you, but could you report on voucher portability in the one year?
So when somebody, when we pull from the waiting list, anybody, when a waiting list opens, and that was one of the things this time when the waiting list for our area opened, there was aggregate websites across the United States that were picking it up. I have people from Los Angeles, looking about Texas, Miami, Florida, Seattle, Washington, you name it. I have people from all over currently on the waiting list. So what happens is when somebody locally applies at a waiting list, if they live in Rockbridge, they can immediately port their voucher out. Meaning they can go wherever and there's a process we go through and they can port out. When somebody applies at a waiting list, for example, say they live in Newport News and they apply, I pull them and determine they're eligible for a voucher. They agree that they have to move here for a year. And then they can pour it out back to wherever they came from or wherever in the United States they would like that has a voucher.
Yeah, I think they take their voucher with them.
They do. It's, once they have their voucher, they have it unless they terminate from the program, they can become over income or something like that. Well, they, they can submit a reasonable accommodation, which is happening more and more. They can claim a disability. And I've had a few of these lately where I've selected people from the waiting list that live elsewhere in Virginia. They get, they submit a reasonable accommodation that they can't move here because of their medical disability and they use the voucher that we gave them from us right where they're at. The other thing is gaming the system. People, I've had people on the program, we have to inspect the units once a year where they're like, yes, I'll move there for a year. I'll go into the apartment and it's vacant. It may be a bed on, a mattress on the ground or something. The utilities are being paid up, but they're not actually residing in the unit. What they're doing is they're using, leasing a place and running it. And then going probably, I suspect back where they're actually were living from. And then when that initial lease term is up, they can port out. They're back, because we don't have any legal authority to go in and inspect the unit. Or anything like that. We're just required to do it annually. And that's when we discovered, when we go in for the annual inspection, we see, well, there's a mattress on the floor and you know, we, we, there's, it's, it's a, it's, there's a lot that we do. And one of the things we do is we check the fridge and we open the fridge and it's empty. So, you know. So there's, I mean, it's it would, and there is a lot more, there, there is a lot more that's going to be placed on the localities. Virginia Housing is talking about now that they're going to start providing funds for for the application fees for people on the voucher, for utility deposits. And that's just going to be more work on the local office. And these admin fees haven't gone up. When I know, I know that when Vicki was in here and when Andrea was in here, when the fees, when Vicki was here with $30 a voucher and Andrea, and then just two years ago, they went to $37. So there hasn't been a significant increase. But the workload has increased.
I, I will say too, when you, when you talk about service, one thing about it is this is a one and a half person program. So, you know, when, when Bruce or prior to him, Andrea or Vicki would go on vacation, then whoever the, the part-time housing inspector is, they'd have to, they have to pick up the slack while they're going and everything. And then when we had turnover, I mean, we've had three different, in my tenure, three different housing supervisors. And that's, that's a tough turnover trying to get somebody trained up because the training that, you know, it's onerous at Virginia Housing and to get all the certifications and everything done. What I'm getting at is if you, if Virginia Housing comes in and they contract with a larger group, they've got more depth behind them. They've got, they've got other people. Somebody's out, they can, somebody else can come down. They, they, they know how to navigate that system. Whereas we're just one and a half people here. And, or help us if I had to do it, because I, I've seen Bruce enough and the stuff that they do, I, I'd make a mess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Suter. It, it appears that the, you know, after hearing everything, the recommendation would be to, you know, authorize staff to provide notice to Virginia Housing will be exiting the agreement, returning oversight to Virginia Housing. Is that what all board members agree with?
Need a motion?
Sure.
We do that.
And a second?
And a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
And Chair of Us, yes, as well. Uh, next up, we have a consideration of the fiscal year twenty-five budget schedule and priorities, Mr. Harris.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, this one agenda item, but we actually, it's two separate, uh, items. The first one is the FY twenty-twenty-five budget schedule, which kicks off this Thursday with the joint meeting with the school board. And, um, uh, as you all are aware, this, uh, can and likely will change based on, um, uh, budgets and draft budgets and stuff and availability of, um, different things that come up during the year. Uh, but at least it provides a framework to help, um, uh, guide me in, in setting out and sourcing out budget letters and stuff, which I will, uh, do at the end of November.
I didn't see a, uh, July, August, September date on there to wait on the state to provide a budget.
Um, yeah. I think, uh, that's a good point. Um, given what happened this year, um, they, we go through the same thing as next year. I think the board, we should consider, uh, just go with what we have and not pretend to wait for the state and we have to amend it afterwards, we amend it afterwards. But after this year, where they didn't even adopt it by July thirtieth or June thirtieth is ridiculous.
I assume you backed into all the dates here, you know, so that, as you always do.
Uh, yes, and we do.
Meeting the deadlines we're supposed to meet, even though as Mr. McDaniel just applied.
And we, but we, we, ours is, uh, and I, I think that's great that, uh, and I can continue that with my recommendations, uh, is trying to get the budget adopted by uh, early May, even though we actually legally have until June thirtieth. Cause that, uh, adopting it then gives, uh, time to start doing a more capital planning and also provides more, um, room for the, uh, schools to, uh, do their planning as well when we adopt it early. So I, I think keeping with that May, first, first meeting in May is a good idea.
It was a very hectic time of year, you know, uh, with budget and all like that. So certainly appreciate you giving us an outline of the, uh, the meetings well in advance. Uh, before you get on to the priorities, uh, is there any questions about the schedule? Harry, none? Is there a motion to approve the schedule as presented?
No move?
A second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day? Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
And Chair of Us, yes, as well. Next up is the priorities, Mr. Harris.
Um, yes, uh, the, um, for you is the FY twenty-five, this is a draft. Um, the finance committee will be looking at this, uh, Tuesday for, uh, further changes. I just wanted to, uh, largely when you look at the, uh, third bullet, um, under, uh, the funding priorities, that is where we need the most feedback. Uh, so I would encourage, uh, the, the board, if they feel like might be some changes to that, to please let the, uh, finance committee and or staff, uh, know. So that the.
The third bullet?
Uh, funding for public education, fire and EMS services, law enforcement, health and welfare, solid waste management objectives, shall be the leading objectives for the fiscal year. Uh, if you want to make any changes there as far as what you think should be goals that need to be funded.
Why would there be any changes?
That's what I'm.
This, this document has been pretty consistent for the past five to seven years. And, and, uh, and I think one of the reasons is, is exactly that, you know.
Those are our core funding.
Already, that's, that's, uh, um, you did make some verbiage, uh, changes last year. You got a little bit more specific, like the firing EMS services. And separating that from just public safety and identifying those things separately.
I don't believe he's recommending that we make any changes, but if you feel the need to, this is the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, I mean, as, as I, the one of the, I know a couple of years ago, we, these used to be in kind of a numerical order. We took that out because we, I believe we deem them all to be equal importance. And, uh, so, so that, I agree with that. I mean, i- is it, I understand the finance committee is meeting next week.
Uh, on Tuesday.
So are you looking for a rec, uh, motion tonight to approve these or would you prefer to wait for the finance committee reviews them?
Typically in the past, we've, we've run it by the, the finance committee, um, first before bringing it to the board. And I thought if you, you might want to have something for the finance committee, um, as individual board members, but as a board document. So if you have, uh, as individual board members, want to share something with the finance committee or staff to bring back to you at the first meeting in November.
So in reality, we, we were trying to get a finance committee meeting scheduled. We just couldn't get schedules to, to meld. We're just staying on with the, kind of with the schedule where this is typically the, the meeting where we adopt these. We didn't have a finance committee recommendation because we weren't able to meet. So we just kept it on the agenda to have you all take a look at it. We can certainly bring it back at the next.
But it was sent out to us. I mean, this isn't the first time we've seen it.
That's true.
I don't know about Mr. Lewis, but I'm comfortable with.
Me too.
Proving it to see.
Right, well, so to Mr. McDaniel's point, I, I, I know we took out the numbers, but, um, I'm still, uh, and I, I, I guess we're intending them to all be equal in importance, uh, the bullet points. But I, I don't know, the, 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 the sentence prior to the bullet point says the board remains committed to education, public safety, public workers ventures. I, I don't know, on some level, I, I'd just like to see the, the third bullet point be the first, but it's a minor, uh, uh, change. It doesn't change the content. Uh, it's just, uh, that's the only thought that, that, that I would have in regards to this. Otherwise I agree with, uh, Dr. Lyons.
Certainly the second order, the, the second number, the second bullet point.
Yeah, I think we need to pay our bills.
Yeah, that's number one.
Three, and that's, that's, we're going to do that. So, yeah, it's just in my mind, you know, and I guess that's to your point of they're all equally important, you know?
Yeah, I can easily move that second, uh, third bullet point and switch, switch number two and three.
I'm not sure that, if we're going to do that, then we need to discuss it because I don't think it needs to be moved. I think certain things you're obligated to do. And they're all important, but I, I wouldn't go moving paragraphs around.
All right, so does the board want to delay action on this to the finance committee? Is they would look at it or does the board want to move forward with it?
I still appreciate my suggestion, but I don't feel that strongly about it.
And your final?
I'm fine with it.
Or is there a motion to approve the document as presented?
So move.
And the second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All right. Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
And Chair of Us, yes, as well.
Uh, I just want to, in defense of the finance committee, they met a couple of times. It's just, we got down into some weeds on some other issues that took up most of their time during those meetings, so.
We feel confident you'll, you'll rope them in.
They were, they were productive. They've been productive.
Worse than I.
There you go. Um, any other, uh, board comments? Mr. Lewis, you have anything?
I, I have one thing I was able to communicate in regards to the TCO appointment. I was, I was able to communicate with the current, uh, servant, Mr. Mish, who had originally said he was, would appreciate a replacement, but he, he has reconsidered and would appreciate being reappointed.
Oh, very nice.
So if, uh, if, uh, if, when we get, I, I can't remember when the term was. I, I, I think it may be January.
I think it's January.
Before it was relevant, but if you could put that in the record, he's, he would appreciate being reappointed.
Does that need to be on an agenda or can? It would just, his term would be up, so it'd be reappointment. I believe, I'm saying if, if, can that be a motion tonight to go ahead and review if he wants to, or does it need to be an action on a modern agenda? Or future meeting? I mean, time is not. You could do it either way, but probably the best thing to do is we'll just have reappointment on the agenda with some other appointments. All right, sounds good. Anything else, Mr. Lewis?
That's right.
Mr. Day, you have anything? Ms. Ayers?
Yep.
Mr. Lyons? Mr. Suter?
Well, one other thing, I did, uh, uh, at our, uh, last planning district committee, uh, or commission meeting, the, uh, audit was presented and another agency has a clean audit, which I have, uh, given a copy up to Mr. Harrison to, to review. All seems well there financially.
Mr. Suter, do you have anything?
I don't.
That's helpful. All right, uh, would like to remind everyone, uh, leave our next me, well, we have a meeting scheduled for Thursday, October twenty-sixth at five o'clock. Joint meeting with the school board at, um, it'll be at Central Elementary?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? And.
Recommend just continuing this meeting to that one.
We, we can do that. And then our next scheduled board meeting, I believe, will be November thirteenth.
I believe the thirteenth.
So before that is election day on November seventh. Uh, ask it, uh, all of our citizens or the ones, uh, who are able to vote, to please get out and do so. You know, we have men and women, uh, fighting for our freedoms and one of those freedoms is the fact that we can, uh, vote. So, uh, ask everyone to do that.
We carry over.
That's possible. Um.
Mr.?
Yeah.
Just want, uh, the, the November meeting is actually the fourteenth.
Yep, it's on Tuesday.
Schedule.
Fourteenth.
And I usually forget that, but luckily I just look down, that's all.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so it's Tuesday the fourteenth.
All right. If there is nothing else, is there a motion to continue the meeting till Thursday night?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
And Chair of Us, yes, as well. Thank you everyone for attending. Please be careful on your way home.